It's Tuesday, December twenty eighth of two thousand and twenty one. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting and the first order of business is the road call.
Okay, Doom.
Here.
Riley. Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen. Legaki.
Here.
Myaski.
Here.
Reeves. Reeves?
She should be joining in. She was at the last meeting.
Yep, I saw her there. Hunt. Hunt? Move on Schumacher.
Here.
And Benegas, we have absent and excused Takowski here. Caravelo.
Here.
So at the moment, we have ten Alders present. One absent and excused. We'll wait to see if we hear from Lisa from Alder Reeves. I'm sorry, excuse me.
All right, thank you. We'll get rolling. Minutes and reports are in the packet. Next item on the agenda would be the public comment period. And we do have two people that have signed up to speak. And the first one is Kurt Byfield. Kurt, are you on the line? And we asked during public comment, you have your comments to three minutes or less if possible. Kurt, are you signed in? If not, we'll go to the second one and see if he comes back. I'm not seeing him, so. The second one was Bill Talbert. Bill, are you on the line?
Hi, yes, I am.
All right, the floor is yours.
Yes, I'm Bill Toward. I live at three through three North Madison Street, resident in the block there. And just wanted to voice my support if there is a parking restriction on North Madison between or north of West Prospect that that is on the east side of the street as a restriction. And that that restriction is from Prospect to McKinley, I believe. I think it says now through Roy Street, so I would be not in support of restricting parking up through Roy and letting people park from Roy to McKinley. So that would be a concern. And then I also just wanted to express some concern there because of the speed. I mean, I know, understand it's a narrow portion of the street or the streets relatively narrow. So when you get two sides parking. But speed through here is a concern to begin with. And I think once you open up the street further with parking only on one side, that's just gonna get worse. So some additional speed restrictions would be helpful, but that's all I wanted to convey there.
All right. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight. And then we'll try one more time to see if Kurt made it on here. Otherwise, if he joins in late and the council wants to waive the rules, we can have him speak when he gets here. With the roads being what they may be, maybe he's just running late. Communications and presentations, we do have in our packet tonight. The housing report from the plan department. And I don't know, Rodney, if there's anything you want to highlight or you just want it in there for informational or if there's any questions regarding the report.
It's an annual document that we have to put together and we put it on our website. I've encouraged council members to take a look. It also does an evaluation and reports out the fee structures we have in place as it relates to affordability for housing. So if you peruse the document later and have questions, certainly reach out to us. A fair amount of time is put into preparing this annually. Actually, the last couple of years, documents are also on our website. So if you want to compare year to year, you could do so by going to our city website.
All right, thank you. Were there any questions from council members tonight about the report?
I just was curious if I could ask Rodney. Does the state really even use this report or is this just make work for us?
I don't know that they audit it, but it is something that the statutes have put in place for us to put together annually. And it is a requirement that we do so. In the event that we don't, we do jeopardize their ability to impose certain fees on building projects. So it is an important document. I don't know how the state monitors and regulates whether communities are doing it or not. I would anticipate that if there was a builder or developer that found a community that didn't do it, they may push the limits and see if those fees would be applicable to their project.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. When you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Is this a good time for me to send my greetings from Norm Monson? In the town or is that out of order?
No, you can do that.
All right, I just wanted to let everybody know I'm sending greetings from Norm, who's the chair of the town of Dunkirk. And his greetings are from the town of Dunkirk to the city of Stoughton. I was at a meeting there recently.
All right, thank you for that. And then are there other communications from Alders? Here and none, I believe we do have a brief communication from our clerk's department.
Yes, hi, everyone. I just wanted to remind you that all your nomination papers will be due Tuesday, January fourth by five P M. to City Hall. And also that we're closed December thirty first, so that's this coming Friday. And anybody that's not picked up their blue books, we have your blue books in your mailboxes at City Hall as well. So we are open for that. We can grab them if you don't want to come all the way into the mailboxes. But we have your Wisconsin blue books and maybe a few other little things in your mailboxes. So any questions in regards to your nomination papers, let me know, but looking forward to receiving them. Thanks, everyone.
All right, one last chance for Alders. Any communications?
I looked and I didn't see if he was, I didn't see him here yet, Tim.
Okay, all right, well, we'll continue to go. And what I can do is when we get to the discussion, I can put the comments back up on the screen, so at least you can read them. I'm not sure if he reached out directly to Alders, but we did get an email in for the public comment section, so I'll share that. Next item is the consent agenda. Looks like there's a couple items in there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reeves. Would anybody like anything acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. And then the next item would be ordinance twenty six of two thousand and twenty one. This is the second reading. I don't remember who introduced it at the last meeting, but certainly.
Yeah, that would be me.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so ordinance twenty six, two thousand and twenty one, amending section seventy dash one seventy six, parent eighty five, no parking west side of North Madison between West Prospect and Roy Street. And this is the second reading. I would move for approval. If there's a second, I'll get, we have a change on here too, I believe.
Yeah, I thought it moved to east side, not west, so.
Yeah, I'll have to amend that.
There is another.
I think we already did amend it, didn't we?
Yeah, I think the original ordinance was on the west side. And I think we were asked to amend it to the east side, and that's what's in the packet portion.
Okay.
So just for clarification, are you motioning for the west side or the east side?
I am motioning for the east side then. I was reading what was on the agenda. So my motion would be parking on the east side of North Madison between West Prospect and Roy Street. And I would move for approval.
All right, was there a second?
Mr. Mayor, there is one other change.
Okay, did I hear a second? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then Alder Takowski?
Yeah, where it says section one in the body of the ordinance, section one, section seventy hyphen one seven six. That eighty two, I believe, should be an eighty five.
Okay, we'll clean that up. Thank you for that.
I guess I have a couple of questions. I know there's been emails back and forth between the resident on the east side of the street and Brett. And I'm just wondering if we need to hold back on this till next meeting. So that owner and Brett can work some things out. It seems like there was a number of things that Brett proposed, and I think we might be a little hasty right now if there's gonna be some changes.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Brett. If you kind of want to update us where we're at, and then I'll try to put this.
Sure. So this section of North Madison has posed some issues for us in the past, not only us, but potential for emergency services as well, especially in the winter months. We have snow along the gutter line that may encroach the roadway. There are some points in time that we have a tough time getting through there with our equipment, primarily during the winter months. We're looking to restrict parking on one side or the other. Originally, we had recommended restricting parking on the west side of the street because the east side does not have as many driveways, so it would allow for more parking. However, during the last meeting with some public comment, the council chose to make an amendment to restrict parking on the east side of the street to allow for those that lived on the west side of the street to access their front doors, basically, in their carriage walk. So Kurt resident, I don't have his email in front of me, but I believe you had on the screen, Mayor Swobly, had wrote an email basically wanting to restrict parking back on the west side as originally proposed. And so we had also talked via email about some different options. Basically, we just want to maintain access through there. So there are some options that we could consider. If we don't want to go through the restricted, you know, restricting parking avenue, we can work really closely with the neighborhood, all stakeholders involved, and come up with kind of a neighborhood group to police themselves along with us to make sure that cars are not parked across from one another. That's where the problem really comes into play is when cars are parked across from each other and we can't get through. And so one option is to work with the residents. Obviously, that's not always gonna work. I mean, if emergency services come upon it and can't get through, making a call to residents isn't gonna save time. So the other option is to do nothing, which will, you know, the problems will continue to happen. The other option is to restrict parking on one side or the other, basically from November first to April first. So there are some options we can consider and work through. And, you know, we're willing to spend the time to make sure we make the right decision for all stakeholders. But that's, I guess that's back on your plan then.
All right, thank you for that. And the pictures I'm showing, this one here is from tonight. And then the other one I showed you was from yesterday. You can kind of see yesterday kind of how it was plowed and it melted. And then, of course, tonight, this is, I'm not sure if they had plowed it or if it had covered. But you can see it does narrow here when the cars get across the street from each other. So I was trying to at least give you kind of a better understanding because you can't plow tight to the car. You gotta leave enough room here so you don't clip off the mirror.
Yeah, the biggest thing to also keep in mind is we have, you know, every truck has a wing on it. And so we're about fourteen feet wide, so it's a wide piece of equipment going through there. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is restrict parking anywhere. However, we have an instance we can't get through, we have, you know, issues of public safety. And so that's where this came into play and came, you know, to our attention to do something about.
Mayor? Comment, please.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, a couple of issues. I brought these up last time. This street is narrow, the same width all the way down. No one's talking about the rest of it. Yes, residents do park on both sides. As in front of my own house, which is probably not too much narrower or wider than this, cars are constantly parked across from each other. So are you gonna restrict that in the middle of a block also because of because of snow issues? We do try to consciously not have that happen. My second and biggest issue is that as chair of the Public Works, this was never brought before, Public Works, to find out other remediations before it got to this point. Third, full-time year-round restriction, I think, is over excessive. You know, we're talking about snow plowing here. I don't think they plow in the summertime if I'm not mistaken. Third, another point is that you know, I think the time that was given notice to all the residents was a little short. And we didn't really pursue it well enough. I think this should be postponed and looked at a little harder. We have an issue from what everyone else is saying is another issue is speeding on here. And some things that need to be done besides that. You know, we may be exasperating a speeding issue. So I am moving to postpone until Public Works has a chance to look at the situation and Public Works Director has a chance to talk with the homeowners involved on the street and come up with some other alternative solutions to such a drastic solution.
All right, was there a second to postpone it?
I'll second that because I also thought it should, I think Brett has a number of new ideas. And I'd like to give the the people involved, our community members involved, a chance to weigh in on that before we just amend it without their input. So I guess I would like to send it to Public Works and bring it back in January.
All right, thank you for that. Yeah, I was gonna address a couple and then Alder Johnson has his hand up. You know, I think Brett can talk a little bit about, you know, some of the other roads because I know he certainly takes them on a case-by-case basis. As far as going through the committee, I'll let Brett address that. I know there was conversation with other departments as well. And I don't know how many committees we want to run this through, so we should talk about that. The year-round thing, I actually agree with you, Alder Mrazeski. I think that does seem excessive unless there's other emergency management vehicles that are having a tough time maneuver in that area. The time, we don't really even have a policy to notify the neighbors on something like this. So I think that that came from the last council meeting that you had asked us to do that. And that's exactly what we did and we did get feedback. So I think that's a good thing. The speeding is kind of a separate issue, you know, and we get, especially now during COVID, we've had a lot more people complaining about speeding and we try to address them as best as we can. This time of the year, it's really difficult to put the speed signs out there because of the weather and, you know, putting them in a place where, you know, they won't get ruined. But certainly, especially with more people working at home, I think more people are noticing cars as they go by. But we have set some of the boards out and received data. And for the most part, people comply. I know there's always a few that go whiz and by. But that's kind of a neighborhood and it's just really difficult for us to manage, you know, the few that, you know, do break the law, but we certainly try when we can. I'll let Brett fill in the blanks and then I think Alder Johnson's gonna be on deck.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, all parking restrictions go through public safety. Alder Mrazeski, I'm happy to take it to Public Works to discuss this item first, if you'd like, in January. But all parking restrictions or anything that's enforceable goes through public safety.
All right, Alder Person Jensen, you had your hand up?
I did. Thank you. Yeah, sorry to go. Couple of things. One, I have no problem discussing this further, bringing it back to the committee. If it goes through Public Works first and it comes to us, that's not a problem for me. I think the committee can, would be happy to have the Public Works input on it. But one thing I wanted to just throw out there, there is one solution to this. And it's something that I think Brett, when he first came on, one of the things that he mentioned was to have a permanent parking restriction from odd to even during the winter months. That would eliminate all of these problems. If that was citywide, you know, how does it work again? Got odd parking, odd night parking. And frankly, the problem I would have with it is I can't remember which way it goes. But anyways, that is something that would eliminate all of these problems and it would be, it would be citywide. It's not something that I'm real enthusiastic about, but I think it could, it could it could be worth having a discussion about that again as well. So just throwing that out there.
All right, anybody else that hasn't spoken on this topic like to put in their two cents worth before we vote to postpone?
I do agree that the restriction should be seasonal. But I don't, I think having Public Works look at it, it's a good idea.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, so the motion on the floor right now would be to postpone it. So that would mean that would really override the initial motion. So if you want to postpone it, have Brett bring back some more information and everything that we discussed. We could certainly do that. So I'll call a question. All in favor to postpone, say aye. And anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you.
Tim, could I ask one thing?
Sure.
If Public Works is gonna look at this, if they could at least have a discussion about a permanent or not a permanent, but a seasonal parking restriction citywide.
They certainly can. I just don't know if that's a Public Works or a public safety issue. I guess we'll talk about that internally and we'll let you know.
I know it was something that was brought up by Brett, you know, quite a few years ago. And I don't know if it needs to come through them, if they need to have a discussion about it or not, or if it just needs to come to public safety. So.
Alder Jensen, if I may. When I talked about it years ago, it's more to do with our current snow emergency and how that's put together. But Alder Mrazeski, if you would mind, we could put on the agenda. Obviously, I don't think anything would, should happen this year or this winter. But we could certainly, if you'd like, Alder Mrazeski, talk about it at Public Works and see what, okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you. The next item is coming from the plan commission. It would be ordinance twenty nine. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, actually, if you can, there it is. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you. This is ordinance twenty nine of two thousand and twenty one approving a general development plan for the area known as the Stoughton Riverfront redevelopment, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and ISO.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Believe it or not, I figured out how to work the screen here, so I don't have to keep stopping here. Only took me like a month, but two months, I figured it out. Any discussion on this one, Alder Person Caravelo?
This is just as was brought for the first reading at our last meeting. This is just regarding the rezone for the property at the riverfront, basically at South and Fourth Street for the proposed multifamily residential project.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Director Sheal?
I can just add the correction was made to the five-year for the solar-ready component as highlighted during the first reading.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to new business, our resolution one seventy nine of two thousand and twenty one, which is the utilities' two thousand and twenty budget and five-year C I P plan. So this is coming out of Stoughton Utilities. We can either start with a motion or a presentation, doesn't really matter. I guess I'll turn it over to Jill and we can start the presentation. So Director Weiss, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, thank you very much for taking the time this evening and going through our budget. I did want to start out by introducing Shannon Stotz. She's our new finance manager. She actually started early in November and just immediately dug into our budget. And so that's what we have for you tonight. Jamin has been a phenomenal support through that process. And do you actually go through the budget like we have years past where Shannon kind of hit the main overview of the budget and I'll kind of talk through some of the aspects of the C I P. So Shannon?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Let me see if I can get this to share. Maybe. Can you see my screen?
We can. Can you enlarge it?
Yes, let me go to presentation mode. Is that better?
Yep, let's go.
Okay, perfect. First of all, it's nice to meet you all, even if it's virtual. Hopefully soon, we can all be back in person and I can actually see you all in person. As Jill said, I've been working for the past month here trying to get the two thousand and twenty two budget together. What we've got here in front of you is just a very, very high-level overview of the electric, water and wastewater. Quickly, I wanted to go over and just kind of add some pieces of what logic we used to put together the two thousand and twenty two budget. Of course, COVID continues to be a question mark. I'm sure you know in your budgets as well. We have put together, we have put in place increases that we know exist, but we do know that there could be some expense costs we have out there that we aren't aware of at this time. So where we knew costs were gonna go up, we've implemented those costs in the budget. Secondly, I wanted to point out that in two thousand and twenty one, we did budget for a wage realignment study. That process is still moving forward. It's not complete at this time. So all of those funds that we had budgeted for a wage realignment study in twenty one are being moved forward into twenty two. We also did go through and kind of tweak the dollars that were allocated to all three utilities. So we're gonna see some tweaks on the water and wastewater side. We wanted to try and align those numbers more so with where employees were placing their time throughout the three utilities. So we'll have some adjustments there as well. Also, there's a three point one percent increase budgeted for all eligible staff starting January first. Also, there's a three-point-one percent increase budgeted for all eligible staff starting January first. And then I also wanted to note, we know there are some possible developments that are sitting out there for next year. However, I did not include those in the, these budgets. We're gonna kind of wait and see how those play out before we actually forecast those here moving forward. And lastly, largely, most importantly, for all three utilities, we are not anticipating any debt issuance here to fund these operations here in twenty-two. You'll see my screen here, electric. We are forecasting next year three-point-five-five percent rate of return on the water side, four percent. I will say I do believe these to be pretty conservative numbers. I would say if anything, these are gonna be the bottom and you know, with developments that are coming in, then I think some of our costs are probably a little on the higher side what we have budgeted. I expect these to be the bottom and then surprise, any increases moving forward to go up. Whoops, sorry, I'm a little touchy here. Okay. So this is a very quick overview of the electric utility, what we have. Couple of things I wanted to point out. Sales, we did budget for a very, very, very slight increase on electric usage in twenty-two. It's point zero-zero-one-eight percent. And the reason I budgeted for an increase here is because we had a dip in nineteen and twenty in our usage and I wanted to try and, I think we're probably gonna hit back to the trend we were prior to COVID. So getting back on that path there. So we have that included in here and I wanted to note as well, we've seen we've got this street lighting here, this negative percent. That is not, I don't anticipate that's actually going to occur. What this adjustment here is showing for the bottom line is the solar project at Dunkirk Dam. I expect the street lighting is probably gonna be in a hundred thousand dollar range here. So just be looking at your own budgets on the city side, don't anticipate that decrease there. On the expense side of things, on the electric utility, if you don't know, the largest expense we have on the electric side is our purchased power. What we did to forecast that is we used our twenty-twenty-two rates that we know we will be seeing and we forecasted that out through the duration of the forecast for this budget. Purchased power costs are a little volatile right now. So if anything, hopefully those numbers will come down as we move forward in future years. In addition, on the expense side, we do have a retirement that we are anticipating here in twenty-twenty-two. So we did budget for an overlap of that replacement position to account for training to occur. So there's a, I think it's about three months of overlap is what we budgeted for here on the expense side. But on end of year, we are anticipating right now, we've got a little over five percent return. I think the twenty-one budget was three-point-eight. So probably somewhere between four and five percent is where I think we'll end the year here in twenty-one. Here is just some graphs, just kind of illustrating what we were talking about. You see our capital expenses here have been a little bit crazy here, dipping here more than likely because of COVID. We expect those to kind of even out moving into the future here. And you'll see the expenses, pilots continuing on the trends that we've seen in years past. Oh, I did want to also note on the capital side, let me go back there. We, as I said, we did budget for a cost we knew were going to exist. So two things to point out on the capital side. We did budget a fifty percent increase in our transformers and I did carry that out for the duration of this forecast. Hopefully that doesn't actually occur, but I do have that moving in the future. We were told anywhere between twenty and fifty percent increase on our transformers. We budgeted for the fifty percent to be safe. And then in addition, we did budget for a twelve percent increase in our electric meters. That is the number we were given that it was gonna be going up. And as you know, those are crucial. We need, we need to have those for operations. Just some more graphs here showing our history. I do this kilowatt hours showing again. We were getting a little crazy here these years. I expect that to hopefully kind of level out here moving forward and following along with the sales again, hoping to get that to level out as well on the electric side. This is pretty small, but the numbers in green are the ones we really want to pay attention to here. This top one here is our rate of return. As I said, hopefully between four and five percent in twenty-one and then in twenty-two, we're looking at three-point-five-five percent. We are allowed four-point-nine. So looking somewhere to get closer to that four-point-nine percent range here, anywhere between, you know, twenty-four and twenty-five. I do have in here two-point-five percent increase in two thousand twenty-four is what we're planning for at this time. Again, that's to be seen. Unrestricted cash on hand, our target is five months. We are meeting that here, looking out to the future of our forecast. And then also importantly, debt coverage, our debt requirement is one-point-three on the electric side. We are easily meeting that requirement and in twenty-three it'll jump, our debt requirement drops, so it's gonna jump up in the double-digit here for us in twenty-three. That was quick on the electric side, but did anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Moving on to the water. Things to point out on the water side. So I did not forecast any increase on the water or wastewater side in usage. As you know, those trends just continue to dip in the downward, downward direction. We have had those forecasted as being flat usage. So on the residential side, the only increase we're showing here, we did have a rate case before the Public Service Commission. It is currently with the Public Service Commission. We are in the rate design stage. Last interaction we had with them a few weeks ago, right before Christmas, our rate case is moving towards the rate design and we were anticipating about a little over eight percent increase. They did tell us that number is nine-point-eight-six percent. This budget reflects an eight percent increase in rates. So we're a little bit short of what we're actually gonna be taking in here. Let's see. Things I wanted to point out here on the expense side. This twenty-one-point-two percent that we see here, I wanted to explain that. So in twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, we actually estimated, or I'm sorry, budgeted for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're only estimating it going to be about a hundred and thirty-four thousand. We are rolling those dollars forward here into twenty-two. And in addition, we have twenty-five thousand dollars set in here for a well rehab, which is the, why we're seeing this increased number here. The thirteen-point-eight percent we're seeing here on chemicals, we do have some DNR sampling that we need as well, which is bumping that number up a little bit. And then lastly, I wanted to point out this twenty-three-point-seven percent increase that we're showing here for the administrative and general salaries. This is two things. One, in twenty-one, we budgeted four hundred and twenty-five thousand. I think we're gonna be a little under budget there at four sixteen. We also have about forty-seven thousand dollars for a water distribution study and then about fifteen thousand dollars for a water study model that's included in here. And this also, these numbers also are gonna be reflective of that, those wage numbers that I've kind of spread out among the different utilities compared to last year. But at the end of twenty-two, we're looking at a rate of return of four percent. Again, I think this is gonna be on the low side, given that our rate case for the Public Service Commission has us at about nine-point-eight-six percent. In addition, I did budget that increase to start April first. I think this rate case is moving along much faster than that. I anticipate that'll probably be more like a February timeframe. So this number I expect to increase at the end of twenty-two. And then looking at the end of twenty-one, four-point-seven-three percent return there to end the year. Estimated, of course. Here's some graphs showing our trends. On the expense side, we're moving right along. The trend line continues. You'll see our capital expenditures have been kind of all over the place in, in prior years. We're looking to smooth that out moving forward. Pilot payments, again, keeping that smooth. I will note for the capital expenses on the water side, we did bump up our water meters by fifty thousand dollars. There are a large number of replacements that need to occur within the coming years. So we're hoping to spread those costs out instead of taking that hit all in one year. The sales, again, we're showing that flat usage. We're not anticipating any growth on the water side. So we're showing that flat and then keeping our sales the same trend as well. Again, we're looking at the green shaded areas here. Starting in twenty-twenty-two, right now it's currently allowed five percent. Starting in twenty-two, we're allowed four-point-nine percent on our rate of return. We've got four percent anticipated in twenty-two. We're gonna hover right around there, twenty-three and twenty-four. And then twenty-five will bump up a little bit to about four-point-seven. Cash on hand, this does show that we're gonna end the year close to nine months on hand. That's not correct. I can tell you then, this isn't taken into account some lead service replacement things we have going. I anticipate it's probably gonna be between the five, six-month range. But we'll adjust that as we move forward here. And then our debt coverage, one-point-three is what we are required to have for cash. Actually, we're gonna be, you know, easily two to three times that here moving forward. So that looks good. On the electric and water side, our number, I think all of our targets are right on track. I think they're well-suited for where we're headed here. Any questions for water? Okay, moving forward to sewer. Sewer, I should back up and for all three of the utilities, what we did to forecast the sewer or the expenses, we took the three-year average where we didn't have data showing us that the expenses were gonna increase. So all three, electric, water and sewer, for the expenses, they were all calculated based on what our prior three-year expenses actually were. The revenue side on the sewer, we do, we are anticipating a rate increase on the sewer side, starting in twenty-two. I have that at six percent. I believe last year we were forecasting it to be a five percent. I did increase it to six. We are showing a little bit of a cash flow issue with some of our projects on the wastewater side. So I bumped that up a little bit to help fund some of that. But notably, I wanted to point out as well for admin, administrative and general salaries, we've got a fourteen-point-nine percent here. In twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. We're only gonna be at four hundred and thirty-six. So we are moving that, those dollars forward into twenty-two. In addition, we do have about fifteen thousand dollars budgeted in addition for permanent facility study as well, which is what's driving that number up. But we're hoping to end the year with about two hundred thousand dollars in income and then hopefully the end of twenty-one, just shy of two hundred as well. So looking at the graphs here, our trends again, we wanna keep those as steady as possible. Our expenses are falling right along that line. Like I said, the, on the sewer side, I bumped up that six percent increase because of some cash flow issues that we're having. This is why, if you see, you know, our, our capital expenses are kind of, we're done below here. Prior years, they have been kind of all over the place. We've had a couple really high years here in nineteen and twenty. And then also in twenty-two, we also have some projects that are gonna be pretty costly as well. So it's really drawn down our cash on hand that we had, hoping in the future to level that out a little more. So we don't have the, those anomalies like that. Again, sales, we're keeping that flat. We're not gonna anticipate any significant growth at this time. Sales will do the same thing and then we're showing our depreciation and plant here as well. And then lastly, the sewer does not have a rate of return, so we don't have to worry about that. What we're looking for here is our cash on hand and our debt coverage. At the end of twenty-one, we are anticipating having a between four and five months on hand. Twenty-two, we do have those large projects we're looking to do in twenty-two. That's gonna draw our cash down to about three and a half months. The target is five. Looking forward, four months, four months, getting our way back up there. Hopefully by about twenty-twenty-six, we'll be back up to where our target number is. So we do have rate increases here in twenty-two of six percent, twenty-four, and then also in twenty-six. Down here at the bottom, we have debt factor of one-point-ten. We are easily able to cover that. So no concerns there. That is what I have for you quickly. Were there any questions on sewer?
I had just one quick one and maybe for Jill. I, I know you had a recent retirement down there. Can you talk a little bit about that and what the plan is for that position?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. We actually have transitioned. Phil and Ruth had retired and he was our lab tech. We've actually transitioned our lab to an outside state-certified lab. We still do some lab work internally, looking to fill that position, but not fill that position necessarily at the same level in which Phil was able to provide to us that level of service because he was an advanced operator and did all that lab work. And so we do, you know, as far as hands and health, we do need some additional help. But looking to actually, in a couple of months here, look to advertise that position and to fill it, but not fill it with a necessary lab, but as a water operator, wastewater operator and kind of more of a slash position where they're able to help and support involved.
Okay, and just a quick follow-up. I, I think in the past, we've done testing down there for Troll Beach. I don't know if you and Dan or Tony have made any arrangements for that yet.
We have. Actually, that's now, basically they have transitioned over that. We are no longer doing that testing for them and they're sending those samples out to state-certified lab as well, just like we are.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council members?
I have one.
Go ahead, Alder Wajewski.
As for Director Weiss, bring this up again as I do annually. Have you budgeted anything for removing overhead wires in the older sections of town and having them buried?
Not specifically. What we always have to look at is basically reliability. And so we take a hard look every year as far as where are sections of the community, we have reliability issues. And so if there isn't a reliability issue in a section that ultimately is overhead, we will look to go underground. But we don't have a, a plan and really realistically, unfortunately, without a reliability issue, we can't transition that for, say, aesthetic needs. So we've got projects in play that will transition some of these things over, but for the most part, nothing, nothing like you're looking for as far as transitioning that overhead to underground, but we do continue to watch for areas where that makes sense.
You know, I'd like to just say this, that, you know, you know, if you look, talking about reliability issues, don't do the maintenance that you're doing on them right now. But no, seriously, I wouldn't, you know, it's been an issue for a number of Alders through the years. And I've seen no movement whatsoever in the, in the ten-plus years I've been on council. I asked your predecessor to come up with a plan for it. And I said, you know, give me a fifty, a seventy-five-year plan to get them underground. I've seen nothing from anybody. So, you know, will I vote for your proposed budget right now? Meaning maybe against not, just for the sake of saying you haven't even thought about it really. And, and it's been asked in the past to you. And I'm just getting kind of tired of, of seeing the same old thing and being rubber-stabbed for you because you do a good job of what you do. But I think you just, it's a disservice to the older part of the community, which has to deal with overhead wires and watching the street trees have to be manipulated to a point of near death and the quality of the urban forest is, is diminished due to it and the quality of life in the community is diminished due to it. I would like to see, see you come up with a plan. I'd like to see it by next year. Something, anything, I'll give you the same, I'll give you the same thing. Fifty to seventy-five years, you know, it, it doesn't have to be done all at once, but it should be being done.
Yeah, Alder Mieski, I would say that, you know, when, when Jill was interviewing for the position, as part of the process of the interview, she did do a presentation on the pros and cons. We can certainly, you know, dust off that presentation and have that done.
I don't think that's necessary because if, if there was, if there was cons, we wouldn't be burying lines in the new parts of town.
I think it, I think in the new parts of town, you know, I think that you'll find during the presentation, it's a little bit more efficient to do that than it would be, especially in some of the older areas where things are established, especially, you know, roads, sidewalks and trees. So, you know, without getting too deep into it, we can certainly, you know, do a presentation. We probably started out at the Utilities Committee. I know the chairperson for the committee is on this meeting tonight listening as well. You know, it's, it's just like any other issue. There's just kind of two sides to the story. And, you know, certainly, you know, you know, expenses, one of them, reliability is another one. And I know there's other factors. So, you know, I guess it's up to you on, you know, how you want to approach your vote tonight. But we certainly, we can put something together. But it's not like we haven't had that conversation in the past. I believe that our finance director, Friedel, has also done a presentation at utilities in the past. And, you know, quite frankly, I, I don't see things, things the same way you do. But reasonable people can disagree on this stuff. So we'll put together some presentations and then you can look forward to, you know, to seeing, you know, what, what, what they have in them. And if you have other ideas of what should be in them that are not, certainly would invite, you know, any input from you or, or anybody else at the council or the committee level, so.
Well, like, like I said, you know, I, I'm not asking for this to be an overnight. I'm asking just for a roadmap, you know, like I said, 50, 75 years. And, you know, I don't think that's unreasonable. And Mayor, I would agree with you, but sadly, we'd both be wrong then, so. I'm just giving you another point of view. That is out there.
Yeah, no, we appreciate here at all points of view. So anybody else have any questions or comments on the budget?
I had a question if I could. This is Lisa. If I read the, if I read this correctly, there are some rate increases for residents. And correct me if I'm wrong, I, I thought I saw two and a half for electric, 4% for water and 6% for sewer. So I guess that's my first question, if I understood that correctly. And if you happen to know what that will cost the average homeowner.
Sure. So right now, the electric, I did plug, I think it's 24 for electric, it's 2.5%. And then water, I think was 3% and 4% in the future. Those are placeholders at this time, those are not set in stone. What we do have for 2022 is 6% for wastewater. In 2020, we had a 5% increase. And I believe, don't quote me, but I believe that an impact is like a $1.55 on the residential customer. So I would anticipate that it would be somewhere between 1, 1.50 and $2 impact on the residential customer in 22. But 22 is the only year where we have an increase that we know we will move forward with.
Thank you.
Yes, another point to that, Lisa, I guess if I jump in is none of those rate cases are good, are planned to be going at the same time. So they would be kind of staggered with the each utility. So they wouldn't happen in the same year. So that impact would be kind of more gradual and spread out.
Thank you for clarifying.
And is, are there any other questions from Alders? Okay, hearing none, so I think, Jill, are you doing the second half?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If I can find the right item to share here.
That's a little trickier on Zoom.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry here, I'm struggling to find what I really want to share.
Yeah, pop some all up and then you just have to select on the one that you actually want to share. So it's real easy to share the wrong one.
And unfortunately, I have a number of things open, which, wish I'd planned better. Okay, I've got it. You're able to see that?
Yep, if you can enlarge it, that would be great. Maximize it, there we go.
So just kind of wanted to go over the CIP. The one, I guess, piece in the range, this is exactly the same thing last year, is really looking at 22 and then kind of forecasting out from there. We continue to work very closely with Brett and with Rodney regarding CIP and so that we align work. I think what we consistently can find and continue to find is that, you know, the utilities themselves, we don't have as much money as the city may have or able to spend. The other thing to add to this different from last year's budget was the DOT majors project. So that's proposed to be going forward in 25, 26 and 27. And that wasn't actually included in our budget at all last year. So just going to want to walk through the different items that we have here and kind of how they've been. So this is being electric. As Shannon had shared, you know, transformers, we actually added 50%. So we're finding actually transformers are extremely difficult to come by. Some companies are not even taking orders at this point in time. Others are saying they've got a year plus out to be able to receive those. So the main things that here on the CIP side, looking at the majors project and really budgeting engineering for that, as we look out at the end of 22, basically, we need to have all of our engineering work completed for the work that's going to happen in 25 and 26. Just makes sense to have them go ahead and design everything for 27 as well, so we can turn that over. We also got some SCADA work that we've got and some substation work. Vehicles pushed actually out some of our bucket truck replacements, our last couple mutual aid requests. And these would, you know, help basically with our day-to-day operations was the backyard machine. So that's something we would use a ton, however, it's significant and it really would help us immensely as far as getting in transformers into locations that are, we really struggle to. And then also a small bucket truck that is just a little bit more maneuverable. For water, one thing I want to highlight here is on the very top line, we don't have specific projects listed out beyond 22. And this is again, really working with Brett and Rodney in terms to really take a hard look. We had laid out a whole bunch of plans. And in the end, we continued to find that we couldn't actually afford them at that same level. So just actually placed in placeholders as far as the monies that we would have, say, able to do those projects. You know, as we go forward, the DOT projects is going to be pretty impactful to us. And that would be really looking at replacing all water and sewer on 51 that's needed at this point in time. Um, so the work then for 2022 ultimately is Academy Street. And then we have two sections of water main that actually we've got valve docked right now. Looking to actually abandon those just for, you know, making sure that we don't have stagnant water and those valves to leak. One of them is a result of the lead service line replacement project that we did. Another one was just over time, it's gotten belled off because it wasn't needed. There's always the potential that those valves could leak. And so we want to remove those sections. And then a big significant piece is actually the engineering for the DOT majors work. I'm sorry, I realized I did not ask if there was any questions with electric for CIP. I don't know if there are, if there's any questions for water for CIP. Now with sewer, we did actually have this in the budget last year. It's the one thing I think that's really caught our attention with this budget process this year was really cash on hand for sewer. And we do have a number of things, I would say, you know, last year, our long-hanging fruit, the thing that really needed our attention was ultimately our lead service lines. As we look forward, it's our collection system on the wastewater side, also our plant. Our plant is starting to age and so there's going to be some needs there. And so this year is going to be, you know, an ongoing effort, don't get me wrong. But, you know, a good hard look and try to start forecasting the direction that we need, need to be going. There may be a need to borrow monies depending on what we come back with for our plant needs as well as we continue to move forward with just general CIP. So Academy, we've got budgeted for 22. Engineering for the DOT project. We actually also budgeted for 22 is a generator for the vulnerable lift station. And then televising equipment. And that's a key piece of kind of that low hanging fruit is really getting a good handle on our collection system. It seems like over the last couple of years, we've gotten so far into a project and then recognized where we've got this other piece of our collection system that needs to be addressed. And so looking really closely this year to try to get everything that we've got televised so that we can get a baseline exactly what our infrastructure for the collection side looks like. So we can start to then plan accordingly from there. Any questions on the sewer CIP? Then technical operations, kind of more overall administration. Some things to keep in mind is looking at possibly, as we have and plan for succession planning, we do also have HR down at our building. We are starting to have some building needs. So did put some monies in for remodel work. The exterior of our building is starting to look a little bit rough. So we've also got some monies in there for some just landscaping and just kind of a little bit more greater maintenance to that. The other thing that we have got is our physical security, IT upgrades, our outage management. And one great thing about the outage management, we'll continue to kind of work towards that is our SCADA system that really looks at our system and monitors our system health. We're able to use that information also to engage our customers. And so we want to be able to engage our customers more if they've got, say, we got a water main break and we can reach out to them and let them know that their water is going to be off. Or if we've got an electrical outage, we can actually reach out to them and let them know that as well. So that's pretty much on the technical operations. I think that's worth highlighting. Any questions?
Alderson Hunt, I thought I saw your hand flash by.
Yeah, I kind of missed my chance there, Jill, on the wastewater, on the wastewater. You said that the water treatment plant kind of was coming onto the horizon. When do you think that would need to be addressed?
I think we've got to take a hard look because there's certain aspects, I'm working very closely with Brian Erickson. He's got some concerns. And I think we've got kind of two pieces, one end of useful life, which is somewhat less of a concern to me because some of the stuff is actually built to last really well. So we've probably got a little bit more life out of it. You know, from a capacity standpoint, it's not an issue. We've got plenty of capacity and it wouldn't really be looking at a plant upgrade from that perspective. But our plant needs are getting to where we've getting parts. And even so, like we, six months of the year, we've got to disinfect the water that goes out to the river. And that UV system is starting to get potentially obsolete. So I want to just take a hard look. We've got grit, you know, pretreatment on the front end of our, our, like on the headworks also is where we've got some grit issues. And we're actually letting some of that grit get into our plant. So we want to take a good hard review of all of the pieces of our plant to see what really needs to be done. You know, I would say that we've probably got a couple of years before we would be looking to do a significant plant upgrade. But I just want to really take that, you know, because the plant's aging. But that doesn't inherently mean that we need to replace all pieces of it. There's just some pieces of it that need a good hard look. And there's new technology, you know, like the UV system, that really works fine. It's doing great. But we're going to get to a point where the components to be able to replace it, we've got a maintenance item, we're not going to be able to get those parts.
If you were involved in addressing like the UV portion and the grit coming in the front end, would there be any reason to look at expanding capacity when, while you were working on those things?
I think that's a very good point. I don't know that we're quite there that we need to do that, but I absolutely believe we should look at that. I also think to your point is that we need to look at all the pieces because everything with wastewater treatment plant is extremely expensive. So I want to really get a good handle of exactly what our plant needs and be able to look at doing a big borrowing, doing all of that work at one time. If we need to actually expand the plant, it makes sense to do that at one time as well. So we're spending that money, we're borrowing for it. And so we're not kind of doing this little piece here and this little piece there, it's just not effective to do it that way.
Okay.
Any other?
I had one, I had one more question about the, the UV system that you were talking about. Is Jill, is that just a translumination UV system or is that a plasma discharge?
Wow, that's a great question. I know that it's a tube system where the UV light, the water flows past it. And I couldn't even probably give you a reasonable educated response to that question.
I'm assuming then if it's a tube system, that it's a transluminator rather than a plasma discharge.
Okay. So yeah, basically, we've got these tubes that all seep down into the water. Water flows past it. The really cool thing about it also is because algae and other things will grow on those, the little windshield wipers that go across those tubes to keep them actually clear. And so the UV system works really well. It works great. It's just really old. And so kind of getting to that point of nervousness a little bit about if something does go south on it, can we, you know, keep it going? Or is it something we're going to have to replace just because we can't get parts for it anymore?
Okay, I'm happy to talk with you about UV systems and that. We're just installing a new process water system in our building right now. So we are up to, up to speed on pharmaceutical grade waters.
I would love to, because even that question, I'm like, I don't know. So I would love to talk to you more about it.
Okay, maybe you could even have you come in and look at a tour of our, our processed water. It's pretty interesting.
I would love to if we can work that out.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
And any other questions? I just had a couple, Jill, I'm wondering, dark fiber, is that in use?
It is up and going. It's not really in use yet. And then speaking of that, I really need to get after them for them to invoice us. Everything from a TDS standpoint is up and going. We don't have everything all plugged in on our end and totally being utilized. We will over the next couple of months. But TDS's side, they are completed. We had our walkthrough, I think, a couple of weeks ago and it should be good to go.
So all the poles are completed as well?
Yes. The only thing that lives out there with TDS anymore though is when we do, did replace a pole, besides obviously TDS doing a full contact, we also have Charter and AT&amp;T that have full contacts. Where those contacts could easily be moved over to the new pole, Cooper did that for us. In situations where moving that contact over was complicated, for whatever reason, there's a riser or different things, then it's back to that communications provider to move those over. We've, we continue, I continue to send lists, I continue to engage them. It's a slow process. So we still have a number of poles to pull that are the old poles, waiting for them to move those transfers over.
Okay, thank you. And everything on the lead side is done and billed and?
Well, we're down to that. We are down to the very last pay request. We have until the midnight of December 31st. I am very engaged with those providing that data back for us to be able to get paid and to also get that reimbursement. So right now, I believe that everything will get addressed and we should have no issues. If we do run into issues, I already worked it out with DNR that if we were to miss that deadline, we can reapply. There's no basically additional paperwork other than an application that has to be submitted by January 18th. And any money is basically that we've got sitting out there, they would then provide it back to us for 22 to make us full. My goal is for us to absolutely not be doing that. But again, if, if we do get into that position, the process is pretty streamlined because of all the work we've done up to this point.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any final questions? Okay, so those are the two presentations. We do have a need to, for the resolution. So I guess I would entertain a motion on the resolution and I can put that back up there. And there it is. Anybody willing to make the motion?
I'm going to approve.
All right. I believe that was a motion by highly.
We have to read the motion. I don't know if we ever read it.
We can do it either way. I mean, if you want to read the resolution, that's fine, at least the top part. So for, I don't have the right one up here, do I?
Could, could simply be a motion to approve resolution. Number, what, R179?
Number, what, R one seventy-nine, twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, there it is. All right. That was a motion, was it Haley?
Yes, and I'll make that my motion to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the person Doom, any discussion? All the person Hunt? You're muted, Fred.
The second whereas seems to be a little garbled up. Stone Utilities, whoops, disappeared.
Sorry about that.
Met to consider and approve the Stoughton Council, Common Council to approve the proposed, it seems like several sentences got. Run together there or something.
Okay, we can clean that up.
I think it just means to say that the Stoughton Utilities Committee met to recommend. That the city council approved the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, it's got approved in there a few times, so is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Truly approved.
Okay, we'll clean that up. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I want to pose that motion does carry, thank you, Jill and Shannon, I appreciate you putting in the time to get the budget put together. Amongst all the other things that you're trying to learn on the fly here, so appreciate that. Have a good night, next item is our one eighty. And that one I have to find here, it's right here. There it is, our one eighty of twenty twenty-one, this is the one that we emailed out today, somehow it was an opening in the packet. And this one came from. Stoughton Utilities and all the person Benegas isn't here, so who would like to introduce this one?
I can do it.
Okay, go ahead, all the person Haley.
So this is our one eighty, one twenty, authorizing a partial release of the flooded public utility easement. In Nordic Ridge. And we. Approved this in utilities because. The utility is fine with that, we don't, we don't currently have. Things we would need to access there, correct, Jill?
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, so you're making a motion then?
Yes, I will move to approve that.
All right, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by all the person Hunt, here's the map here, Director Weiss, did you want to kind of describe it?
Sure, actually, the developer reached out to us, we typically would have a twelve-foot utility easement where we don't have, say, on the other lot. An easement as well, so that's the reason for the twelve-foot easement. This lot is in process of being sold, I guess the builder has a plan that needs that additional two feet, so requested that we. Release two feet of the easement to basically remain ten feet of an easement as opposed to twelve. We reviewed it internally, we did have a number of discussions about it, and. The lot, the outlot to the south also is city-owned and actually used for stormwater. So in the review of it, I believe very much that we can have, will have no problem with the ten feet, it is only us releasing it, so charter. AT&amp;T, anyone else still would have rights to that two feet. But we did work it out and talk with our attorneys as well as we've worked with Director Sheil, and if we knew that need the additional two feet. We could get that on the outlot that's to the south, but right now, we have no concerns or issues with the ten feet that's being provided by releasing the two feet.
All right, thank you, any questions or comments? See none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. And any opposed? That motion does carry, thank you, next item, item number ten. Is discussion and possible action regarding revisions to the application by RHD Properties LLC. For tax incremental financing for a project known as Fifty-One West, and this one came out of the Finance Committee. And I don't think there's an actual resolution in here, but I'll turn it over to Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, so we had a discussion in a closed session in the committee level. To talk about some modifications that had to be made to the initial TIF application that we'd seen for Fifty-One West. The the adjustments were necessary because of a difference in the. Gosh, law, or in the mill, the mill rate adjustment was a bit. Lower there, the the initial forecasted one that we used was lower than than what the actual had come in at. And they also needed to make an addition on to some street work based on. The that little extension street that would go into, that would push into the Linnaroo property a little bit. And that was added in there also, so. That changed some of the terms and that that we were proposed in there. I don't know if I want to take the specifics any further on it, or, because this one does have a potential for. A closed session, if I can get back to that. Based on Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, brand one, brand E. For purpose of deliberating or negotiating purchase of public properties, investing in public funds. Or conducting other specified public businesses. So I don't know if we want to consider a closed session, or if there are other things that we can discuss further in open.
I guess I would leave that up to, is there anything you want to add, Director Frito at this point? Or Attorney Dragney?
I'll touch on it first, Alder Schumacher did a nice job of of kind of summarizing it, and there's a lot of the, you had kind of the overall impacts of. You know, what's happened based on the mill rate change and then the the scope change within the within the project. I would say, I don't know if Bob or anybody from his team is on the line right now, but if the council is considering going into open session, if he is here. And anybody has any specific questions for him. I I would recommend potentially doing that before the council considers going into closed session, so that's all I have right now.
All right, anything from Attorney Dragney?
No, I don't have anything to add.
All right, so I guess at this point, I I have to. Find out what the desire is of the council, if you want to go ahead and move forward, or if you'd rather go into a closed session and discuss the details. As we did at Finance, it's totally up to you guys.
I guess since how it is a big chunk of change that we're changing, I would like all the council to be. On the same page before you make a decision and have a discussion.
All right, so we have the language on the agenda to go into closed session, so if somebody wants to read it, make the motion, we can do that. I know Brett already read it was.
All right, well, I will make the motion to go into closed session based on Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, brand one, brand E. For purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds. Or conducting other specified public business, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch, and this would be a roll call vote, Andy, when you're ready.
Okay, Haley.
Yes.
Hirsch. Yes. Jump. Okay. Lagaki, okay, thank you. Lagaki. Mayaski. Reeves.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Chakolsky.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Aye.
And Doom.
Aye.
That'll be eleven.
Okay, so I gotta give WSTO a moment to sign off, and then I'm. Trying to see, somebody's logged in as owner, oh, it looks like that person logged off, so we're good there. And then I just have to.